Welcome, Winthrop, to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of May 18th, 2021. This is a continuation of a meeting that was opened at 6:30 PM for an executive session. That executive session lasted a half hour and we are now in an open session, but the meeting has already been opened. The phone number to join us is 1-301-715-8592, with an ID number of 858-779-29998. Okay, so that is for any public hearings or public comment that we have, alright? Can we retake the roll call since we were in a different Zoom with the last one? Denise, you there?
I'm here. Okay, Counselor Jero.
Here.
Counselor Placot. Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Terry.
Yeah.
Counselor Honan.
Yeah.
Counselor LaConte.
Present.
Counselor Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncorry.
Here.
Glad that everybody made it over from the other Zoom to this one. Let's move on. I would like a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2021 meeting as circulated.
Motion to approve.
Motion been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Are there any omissions? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counselor Jero.
Yes.
Counselor Placot. Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor LaConte.
Yes.
Counselor Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncorry.
Yes. Any minutes are accepted. Alright, we're moving on to general information and recommendations. And I just want to be happy to inform you that we're following the governor's orders and things are opening up as far as COVID and pandemic. Today was a big day where they allowed people in youth and amateur sports to not have to wear their masks when they're playing them. And some in schools and summer camps are not going to have to wear masks starting on May 18th. Starting May 29th, face coverings and social distance will be a thing of the past for people who are vaccinated. And unfortunately, only people that are unvaccinated would probably have to wear the mask indoors. Exceptions to wear the face masks is, of course, if you're on public transportation, they want people wearing a face mask. In public schools while in school, face masks will still be worn. But all businesses are opening on May 29th with no limitations as to capacity getting together, as well as gathering limits and masks for outdoor and indoor amateur sports are not going to be required any longer. The state of emergency is declared that it will end on June 15th. Now, that's all good news because Winthrop is in a good place right now. I think we're at a percentage of about 1.6. And you're going to hear from Meredith very soon about what's going on health-wise. But the important thing that I think, and it's a big accomplishment that just was announced and it will just be announced, is that Winthrop has got a stash of Pfizer vaccine. And they will be running clinics. It's important because now that the governor and the CDC has opened vaccinations for children 12 and over, you know, there were quite a few people in our school system that can get vaccines and we're going to make it available for them. Thanks to Heather and to great superintendent, we will be having on Wednesdays when the kids are in half-day, the other half of the day, there will be a clinic at the school where we can vaccinate our own students and any staff that's not vaccinated yet in those afternoons from ages 12 and up. We will be supplying vaccines. Any other people in Winthrop who have not received vaccines will be allowed to attend clinics that Heather will be running at the old St. John's Evangelist Church Hall. They could say Michael's Church Hall now. And those clinics will be open on Thursdays from 4:00 to 7:00. Let's get every single Winthrop person vaccinated. And I want to thank a true hero of this pandemic for the job that she's done in getting these Pfizer vaccines and organizing and setting up these clinics because I think we can accomplish a lot more. I think we can get everyone in Winthrop vaccinated in the next couple of weeks because they will be free, they will be, clinics will be open, and you can go by any Thursday from now on from 4:00 to 7:00 if you need a vaccination. So please spread the word and get people to get down there, okay? Does anyone else have any general information or recommendations? If not, we will skip down. We have no public hearings today to public comment. The line is now open for public comment. The number again is 1-301-715-8592, with an ID number of 858-779-29998. Is there anyone with a hand up of the attendees?
I don't see any hands up at this time.
I see we have 18 people with us and there's no hands up at this time?
No, there are no hands up.
Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. Denise, do you have any correspondence?
No, I did not receive any.
Okay. Committee reports. Finance Committee first. Do we have a Finance Committee budget hearings going on?
We have Finance Commission budget hearings going on. We've had four meetings since the council's last meeting and we're going through the process of meeting with department heads who have requested to meet with us. We did reach out to each department head. We will be having three additional meetings and we will begin deliberating on our recommendations and we will have something back to the council by the first week in June for the council to vote on on June 14th or 15th, I believe, 15th. Meetings are all public meetings. They've been on Zoom. And that is it, but we have been, meetings have averaged about two and a half to three hours each meeting. And there's a lot to go over, obviously, with the budget.
Yes. I bumped into a couple of members of Finance Commission and they said they've been working pretty hard on it. They met with two people last night, I believe.
We did.
Okay, is that the end of your report? Any questions for the Finance Commission? Hearing none, let's move on. Can I have a Miller Field Committee report as well, Counselor Terry?
Sure. Miller Field Committee met last week on a couple of items. One on the tennis courts. If people have noticed, the tennis courts, the pavement is down now with the coating for the courts themselves. Everything seems to be going well there. We still look to be finished by the end of June, which is what we had planned on, so that's good. The bids for the dog park and golf shed, I guess for a better word, the golf shed is, they are being open Thursday, I believe. And we hope to award that by the beginning of June and hope to see work starting right away and a completion in the early summer for those two projects. And this, you know, as far as the Miller Field itself, we did some stuff in the fieldhouse, including some non-skid painting on the floor so nobody would slip. We had a few settlement issues and the away bleachers, which we're addressing now. Fencing is all done. A lot of the stuff in the fieldhouse is complete. Bathrooms are complete. Some of the equipment going into the concession area is arriving shortly. We're still on track to open it, you know, Labor Day-ish, a grand opening will be sometime, I believe, once the schedules come out, the athletic schedules, it will probably be the first or second Friday in September. But we will keep you posted on that as well and we are, and we have been and continue to be on budget with that project.
Correct. Thank you very much, Counselor Terry. Does anybody have any questions on Miller Field? It's moving along really well. It looks like the tennis court flooring is in and they're working on putting in the curbstones for the additional parking and sidewalks. So it really is moving along quickly and hopefully it's going to be ready by that deadline of July 1st, so we'll have a grand opening. Okay, moving on to the Rules and Ordinance Committee. You got quite a few things in there.
Sure. So we had two meetings over the past two weeks. The two agenda items were the middle school rezoning and the recommendations from the Ordinance Review Committee. I'm going to let Counselor Jero take over the recommendations we made for the Ordinance Review Committee because he was on that committee and also on Rules and Ordinances, so he might be able to speak to that. But in regards to the middle school zoning, by way of procedure, I just would like to let everyone know we agreed that the way that we would handle this would be to would be to come up with a sort of, I guess, a soft recommendation for what we're going to have. And we've kind of adopted that based off of the Planning Board's proposal. We're going to seek Town Council's recommendation, meaning KP Law, see if they have any suggestions and just to make sure that the actual zoning language is going to accomplish what it is policy-wise that the council and the Planning Board wanted to. Once we get that okay from KP Law, I plan on having a public hearing, presenting it to the committee and we'll actually vote on it before the next Town Council meeting to send it to the Town Council for final approval. We really focused, I think, pretty strongly on what the Planning Board, what their proposal was, with the only addition being that we wanted to have the height, the height section of their recommendation applied to larger sites and so it's sort of narrowing the scope of what that height limitation would do and apply it to large sites such as the middle school, you know, where most of the focus of this process was. The reasoning behind that was is that we didn't want to see it have a situation where those, where these recommendations, you know, negatively impacted individuals, you know, in any way. If we were to change the whole code and the focus of this was just the middle school, I think that that might have some negative consequences. So we think that this would, this would sort of narrow the scope of what we're trying to do and sort of take a scalpel and really apply it in the best way that we can. So that's really the plan. That's what we're going to be planning, or what we're planning on doing with the, with the middle school. And so hopefully by the next meeting, we will have had a public hearing and have voted on final language. But everything else that, that the committee wants to send to Town Council is based off of the Planning Board's recommendation. And even the, the height restrictions are also, you know, without that one change that it only applies to larger sites being will be the, pretty much the Planning Board's proposal. So with that, I will turn it over to Counselor Jero for the Ordinance Review Committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yep, so as, as Vice President Christopher mentioned, I was one member of the Ordinance Review Committee. We were, we were established last year around this time and we met throughout the year under the leadership of Chairman and now State Representative Jeff Turco to come up with the following recommendations. I will say that the, it is the will of the committee to continue meeting, just given some of the complications this past year with COVID and remote meetings and the fact that a few of the members of our committee were, you know, distracted with other obligations. The committee didn't really have, the committee felt like there was more to sink its teeth into. And so there is a will for this committee to, to continue to work. But per the charter, a report needed to be issued to the council by the first meeting in May. This committee believes it met that obligation and so I can just run through quickly the, the handful of motions that this committee-
You want to do that under Old Business? I mean, this is like the committee report that you had a meeting?
No, I understand. So, so I believe it's the will of the Chairman of Rules and Ordinances to not put a motion forward tonight out of committee, rather than just explain some of the, the key recommendations from the committee, give the council a couple more weeks to review this package. It's rather lengthy and they're all charter review, they're all charter changes. So I think a motion will be coming at a later date, but I can save it for Old Business if you'd like, but I don't think the motion will be coming forth tonight.
Okay. Alright, if you want to go ahead now, it's part of the committee report and we'll just go through it on Old Business. It's fine.
Okay, okay. So there were three changes suggested by the Ordinance Review Committee and then there were a handful of other motions that were suggested by the Collins Center, who was contracted to help with this committee's work. And the Ordinance Review Committee voted on all of, all of those. And then the Ordinance Review Committee looked at them over the past two weeks and most of those will be coming forth. But again, I'm not going to get into detail on those sort of Collins Center non-substantive technical changes to the charter, but they are in that report that I recommend that folks read and if they have questions, please reach out to me or anyone else on the committee for that matter to go through. But the three changes that were suggested and proposed by the Ordinance Review Committee and not by the Collins Center were as follows. In Section 2-10A, it's recommended that this section shall be amended at the end by inserting the following paragraph. Quote, "The council president shall keep a file available to members of the Town Council of all candidates for policymaking member bodies who have submitted a written letter of interest or application for set appointment." In committee, the Rules and Ordinances Committee recommended that this actually be done by the council president or a designee. And that is what is expected to be coming forward in a couple of weeks. The second motion was in Section 4-1, Paragraph 5, shall be amended by inserting the word "full" in between the words "the" and "Town Council" in the first sentence. And this is in relation to Town Council employee evaluation. So it's recommending that the full Town Council as opposed to just the Town Council. And the third amendment sort of piggybacks off of that. Section 2-8E shall be amended by inserting at the end of the paragraph the following. "The evaluations of all officers elected by Town, by the Town Council shall be conducted by the full Town Council in a manner consistent with the evaluation of the Town Manager as set forth in Section 4-1, Paragraph 5." So I know we all have the charter memorized, but for those of us that don't, I recommend you just take a look at this report and sort of compare it side by side with the charter and most of it is technical, non-substantive. But again, this is sort of an important part of our town democracy and I believe it's the will of the Chairman of the Rules and Ordinances Committee to put this off for a few more weeks, so. Thank you.
Being that they're, being that they're all charter changes, my understanding is, is that it would take a vote of the, a vote on the ballot. So I think it would probably be the, the best path forward to make substantive changes for this report would be to take them all at once rather than having these, you know, elections come out one after another after another. If I'm not mistaken, this would be the first attempt at changing, and someone who's been on the council longer than me might correct me, but I think this would be the first change to the charter that we, we would have made. And I think that it's important that we do that all at once, once the Collins Center and this committee makes further, further recommendations.
I believe we did change a couple of lines in the charter about elections and about possibility of pay raises on the ballot back some time ago. But I don't know, I think it might have been after the first one 10 years ago.
Yeah, and I will also say that there's a couple of MGL state laws that have been updated over the years that, that are also contained in this report. Some, some were noted by the Collins Center about updating the makeup of the Housing, Housing Board and also updates having to do with the, with the open meeting law. Some of the, some of the things that we have in our charter don't necessarily match up with the MGLs that control them. So those things are really just, you know, our administrative things, they're important that we're in line with the state and what they want us to do. So I think it's, it's probably due time that we do make these changes to reflect what the state law says. But at the same time, I think that it's important that we do it, we do it once so that everybody, so that people have, you know, one opportunity to look at these changes and, and then vote on them rather than trying to do it twice because we've gotten this report kind of piecemeal from the Ordinance Review Committee.
Okay, just to check that if we really have to put the ones that are law changes that the legislature has already put in effect.
Yeah, the Housing Authority one, we definitely have to put on and that's got to go in-
Yeah, that has to be changed, but I'm wondering if it has to be done by an election or whether because it's state law, we can just adopt it. So I think you got to check with state, you know, either Attorney General or Secretary of State to see if we have to have an actual ballot question for something that is already the law, okay?
I think that should be checked out.
Anybody else have any questions for?
I just-
I'm sorry, you're not finished?
No, no, I just, I saw Counsel Farino there and I failed to recognize him as well. He was a critical member of the Ordinance Review Committee.
No, no offense taken.
Along with the following other members. The Chairman, State Representative Jeff Turco, the Town Clerk, Calvi Tally, Alicia Delvento, Robert Carroll, Kurt Muller, Ricky Baez, and James Siffleata.
And I want to thank them all for serving and taking their time to be on that committee and working when they did, okay? Thank you, Counsel Terry.
Thanks, and thank you guys again. You did a great job. But in, Vice President Christopher mentioned it earlier, how they, I believe he said they have a desire to, you know, there were, or maybe it was Counselor Jero that said that. Obviously, there was, there's been some disruptions over the past year and, and they do have a desire to continue doing some work here. And I know that the charter says that we bought the report, which we did, but asking the council president if we could, if we need or can we ask for a motion for them to continue? You know, if we're putting some changes on the charter on the ballot, it would be good for this committee, fantastic work so far, to have a little bit more time if there are any other changes that, that they feel are needed or warranted to go on the, on a ballot in November, let's say, or whatever. So we could, you know, kind of get more done if we, if need be. But I thought I heard that they felt that they would like a little bit more time, so I would, I would not want to disband them and wanted to see if it would require a, a motion from us to, to extend their service for X amount of time.
The other thing, Counselor Terry, through the, through the chairman, we have a little more time on the meter with the Collins Center. We did have a grant, so there is some money that we would like to utilize through that grant and, you know, so that, that was the other reason why we wanted to extend.
Yeah, and that, and that's what the committee, the committee always had the understanding that this committee would be in some fashion be extending their work. That's why I'm not making a motion right now to pass what they suggested because I think it's important that we take what their next suggestion is and also pass that along with this so that we're not having to ballot, take up two sets of recommendations.
That, just for information, that committee's not disbanded. That's, that committee stays in existence until a new one is appointed five years later. So the committee is, is always in existence. They had a deadline to submit a report according to the charter, so a report was submitted. But as any one of you or them, they can suggest a change to the council, whether it be a charter change or an ordinance change. And hopefully they will continue to use a meeting with the Collins Center and come back with maybe some other changes. I think Denise has some changes she'd like to see looked at, that she's having problems with when she's working with all these committees that have applications and licenses. And I think she's going to give those to the Ordinance Review Committee as well. So, I mean, changes can be made at any time. It doesn't just have to be made every five years. So I think that committee can continue working and, you know, not make an official report, but make a request to the council at any time to make a change or two changes or whatever they feel should be and it would go through Rules and Ordinances and to the council to vote on. You know, on, on the ballot for the town to vote on, depending on what their, their question is, okay? Is that, you all set with your report? Anybody else have any questions for Counselor Christopher, Vice President Christopher? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Town Managers' report. I'd like to call upon an interim Town Manager who's doing a great job. And thank him for being interim Town Manager.
The benefits certainly-
Yes.
Thank you. Before I get started on my report, I'm going to invite Director Hurley to address the council and the public. And then I'll just ask her to stay on because there's some questions around holiday celebrations.
Hey, everybody. So I did not do any slides today. The day got a little away for me, but I will give you just my verbal update. So as you know, daily case counts are remaining low. As in the last 14 days, 1.6% of cases were positive or 1.6% of tests were positive. So our, our overall percent positivity has dropped significantly. Cases, there was no change from yesterday. Total cases remain at 2,399 with 13 currently isolated. Going forward, I think it makes the most sense to report out numbers on Mondays only since they are so low with the understanding that, of course, if anything changes or if there's a concern in the community, we will, we'll go back to more frequent updates. In terms of vaccination, 59% of Winthrop's population has received at least their first dose with 48% are fully vaccinated. This is kind of an exciting time that we will be receiving Pfizer vaccine beginning next week through a partnership that we have created with the North Metro Region with eight other communities and it's being headed by Cambridge Health Alliance. So on Wednesday, May 26th, we'll be holding a Pfizer vaccine clinic in conjunction with the Winthrop Public Schools to target students age 12 and up and their families. We picked that day, number one, because it's a, it's a half-day. And number two, that means that their second dose will be the last week of school. So we know that we can complete their series for those students prior to summer vacation. And then beginning on Thursday, we'll be hosting a community clinic at St. Michael's Gymnasium, which is the former St. John's on Winthrop Street, from 4:00 to 7:00 for any community member that needs vaccination. And depending on the demand, that'll kind of dictate. St. Michael's has been a wonderful partner and has said, you know, just let us know what you need. And so it's hard to gauge what the demand is going to be. We've sent out a survey within the Winthrop Public Schools as of this afternoon to gauge where we think we're going to be at. And then it seems like the supply is there, so we'll just be able to meet the demands of the community going forward. And happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Meredith, again, I want to say you are the hero of this pandemic and- Meredith, again, I want to say you are the hero of this pandemic, and I want to thank you. And I also want to thank Lisa for helping you get this uh thing going into school because it's so important. We take care of those kids and get them vaccinated too.
Yeah, and this has been a huge collective effort with the MRC. You know, they're they're the ones that are stepping up, you know, every time that we come up with these ideas and and some of their volunteers have been in my office diligently. Um, so thank you for the for the kind words and, you know, there's so many.
You got a suggestion for this allergies?
The pollen's bad. The pollen, the pollen's been getting me too.
My tur- my car turned green.
Thank you, Heather.
Any, any questions for Director Hurley? Okay, thank you.
Just stay on Meredith, um, I'm sorry. Um, so there's been some questions about Fourth of July. There's been a Horribles Parade question. Um, I have from the town manager's office has said parades are permissible under the governor's order prior to the mask being lifted. Um, however, I did also advise that with the permission and consent of public health. So the state governor's order um might be lifted. Local municipalities still have their own powers under chapter one eleven um that they can, they can add add layers of precaution if they feel it's necessary. So I I did, A, don't want to o- overstate, I think we have to work in concert uh with general government and public health to make sure we're making the right decisions. Um, as of today, the Fourth of July celebrations have not been opened other than private backyard parties. Am I correct, Meredith?
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, I think that will, we, I've asked around to other municipalities and, you know, the announcement from the governor yesterday was not, it was, it must have been embargoed at the highest levels because there wasn't any indication that we were going to be able to, that we would be transitioning. Um, which unfortunately has created a fair amount of of confusion also. Um, you know, even just with um high school sports, they, their governing body is the MIAA and they still required sports up and, I mean, masks up until today despite the fact that Winthrop Little League could go out and play yesterday. So there's just like been a little bit of confusion and we're kind of catching up on a lot of these, a lot of these things right now.
So the other thing, I, what I don't want to do is be the only community in the entire area that has fireworks on the Fourth of July because that means we usually get eight thousand people, ten thousand people, we're skyrocketing the influx of population here. So we want to be careful too. Um, you know, if the governor says it's permissible and the board of health is comfortable, we'll certainly move in that direction. But I think we got to be careful of what other eight, what other jurisdictions are doing so we don't have this whole collapse or influx into Winthrop. I believe full-heartedly, everyone deserves fireworks. Um, and we'll, we'll try to do them at some point during the summer. Um, and you know, whether it's on July fourth or not is still uh an open question. Um, but we'll address it as we move forward. I know Chief Flanagan's ready and willing and able. Um, please, I'll, I'll stop there, Mr. President, is that okay? And then I'll go back to my report or you want me to go through it all?
Well, I think you have a question on this part, uh Council Farino, so why don't you answer that?
Yeah, I just, I I just wanted Meredith to repeat the vaccination availability in the town. I think someone got mixed up and we want.
Sure.
Thank you.
So beginning, so next Wednesday, we're opening it to Winthrop Public School students and their families. Um, and then on Thursday, it'll be four to seven at Saint Michael, the former Saint John's um parish. Um, and with the idea that we can hold weekly clinics on Thursdays, given the demand.
Thank you.
I I I think the question is, is it starting tomorrow?
Oh, no, oh, no, no, sorry. It's next Thursday. Yeah, sorry.
It's next Wednesday and next Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Council of Michael.
Uh, we specifically addressed, um, you know, the fireworks, which is understandable because, you know, we don't know who's having fireworks, who's not. Um, we w- we brought it up, but we didn't say like the Horribles Parade, uh, which is a great Winthrop tradition and usually mostly attended by Winthrop residents. Um, if all the restrictions I I lifted on the twenty-ninth and the state of emergency is lifted on June fifteenth, is is there anything that could stop the Horribles Parade from taking place?
A shot of another outbreak, no. I I've already authorized the Horribles Prairie with with the condition that the Winthrop Public Health um also has no concerns. Um, so I, you know, I think the Horrible Parade is drastically different than the fireworks, yes. It's all Winthrop uh people, it's all people hopefully will be vaccinated by then. Um, and it's, it's certainly a much smaller crowd, um significant, but much smaller crowd than the fireworks. So I am comfortable with the Horribles Parade moving forward.
Thank you, Chief.
And I think part of, part of, when I spoke with the the committee for the Horribles Parade was more so about how it's, it's nearly two events where it's the parade and then it's the activities down at Coughlin Park. And the higher risk that we were worried about was was navigating the guidelines around, you know, high eating contests and things like that. So we might just have to take a look at that aspect of it um more closely than the actual parade itself.
Okay, thank you, Meredith. Okay, Chief.
Thank you. Uh, so we had the fear and impartial policing uh training today. Director Hurley joined us. Uh, we're so intermingled between the police and public health. Uh, that it was important for her to be there, so thank you for joining uh with us, Meredith. So she understands what we're training in and how her her um social workers and therapists and um recovery coaches will interact with our department. Um, tomorrow night is the second portion. Um, it was an invite only because we're only allowed thirty-five seats. For fear and impartial uh training, we tried to cover a diverse group in the community. Um, and we'll have uh all the law enforcement commanders there, the lieutenants, deputy chief and myself. Um, sergeants, we made optional to make more room for the public. So it's thirty-five people with law enforcement staff. Um, so we certainly um, you know, thought about the process. We're limited in the amount of people we had, but this is just the beginning. Uh, we don't plan on solving everything in in tomorrow night, so this is just the beginning of our community meetings and getting input from the community and having the community understand what law enforcement and policing um is in Winthrop and what do we do here and how do we hire? And where does the list come from and everything else? So it was a great day, um enjoyed it, went to Beart Club again. We want to thank them for donating this space, gave us a large room to spread out in. And um, so I I look forward to tomorrow night um as the first um deposit uh on fear and impartial policing and making sure the public understands how we're operating. Um, I also would like to thank Saint Michael, Saint John's, I'll never be able to call it Saint Michael's. So Saint John's um for their cooperation with Meredith and and myself, they've been an excellent partner using their space, having Sean moved up there while we did the COVID testing down here. Um, so they they've really stepped forward, they have the space, they have that gym. We don't have many gyms in Winthrop, so uh when we see a gym, we get excited, we try to uh partner with them. Ingleside Park, just an update on Ingleside Park, the contract went out uh last Thursday. We expect that to be back this week. Um, and then you'll start to see construction uh moving in Ingleside Park area. Um, we're in conversations with a interim CFO, uh a ninety-day contract um with someone who has gra- a great experience, thirty-eight years in in the business, thirty-two teaching at Suffolk University, municipal finance, um just to try to give Robbie a a little bit of a break. He's getting inundated with all these requests and and spreadsheet requests and everything else. Um, and help close the year and open the year. Um, until we've, we were situated to say, who's going to hire the CFO? When is that going out? Um, I think that's still an unknown, we're working through. Uh, Bike Winthrop partnered with the Police Department over the weekend for another great event, so we appreciate our partnerships there. Um, the Revia Street project, I'm going to ask Steve just to jump in. So we have a tip project that's been ongoing and on the, on the board here for a while. Starting some serious meetings over this, and I just think the councils should be advised before National Grid comes in. Um, you know, what does that project, where does it begin, where does it end, what's the duration? Um, and I have to, you know, thank Steve ahead of time for holding National Grid's feet to the fire and not accepting patchwork on Revia Street, but getting a full uh curb-to-curb with curbs and sidewalks um replaced during this project, so Steve.
Well, so uh I'm actually uh in the process, Terry, of 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 getting that meeting together uh with uh Dan Cameron, the regional coordinator for National Grid and their project manager. Um, you know, we want to get their presentation in front of council. Uh, but like the update right now is is um National Grid has awarded the contract. They'll be starting in in Revia, they'll be coming into Winthrop uh this calendar year, at least that's their proposal uh as early as the uh uh summer months. The the project is in several phases. Uh, the duration of the project um is two to three years. Um, what they're doing is they're removing uh direct burial cables and they're, they're putting uh new electrical uh wiring in conduit to better serve the substation at Agyle Street. Um, so it's a very important project uh for National Grid. It's also a very important project for for the town of Winthrop. Um, however, it's, it's a very uh impactful um area. We all know we only got two entrances uh in and out of town. Uh, and this leg of Revia Street between the town line and Crest Ave Lights and then around the corner to Agyle Street will be under construction in phases for um up to three years. Um, as uh Terry mentioned, we we will uh we've, we've come to an agreement in a restoration phase, which is, which is very important. I mean, there's no way we're going to be inconvenienced by a project of this magnitude without having a brand-new corridor uh put back in and not just uh patches and patchwork. So I I mean, that that's the information I I have right now, Terry. Uh, we we will, we will sit with National Grid and we'll get them in front of uh the town council so that everybody can ask questions. I know they have gone through uh the Conservation Commission, they've got their order of conditions for their construction. So they're, they're moving toward breaking ground in the next uh several months.
Yeah, my only reason I'm bringing it up tonight is I hate to have a presentation come in uh that your department heads have been working on uh for the past couple of months and then the council just gets a pro- a project dropped on them. Uh, this is something that, uh, you know, quite frankly, um, we'd like to push off, get the center completed and and then start this project, but the the timelines might overlap slightly. Um, and certainly it's going to be an impact in traffic in in that area. Um, you're probably going to be looking at going up over Quin- over um Cliff and Quin- Quincy down Upland to get out of Winthrop through the Highlands. And inbound traffic would flow on Revia Street, one lane open at all times. We've asked them um again to make sure the parking returns to the citizens after five P M. Um, they can park there and have to be moved by seven A M. So at least they have parking on Revia Street, parking is an issue up there. So we, you know, we've tried to get um them just to to commit to these things. All notifications would be on National Grid and responsible for National Grid. Um, but again, this is a primer and uh you'll get a full presentation from National Grid uh on why they're doing it, how they're doing it, and how long it's going to be. Thank you, uh Steve, I didn't mean to drop it on you.
Just one addition, Terry, is uh of course, right on the heels of their project, actually having a little bit of overlap in their final phase is our Revia Street uh corridor tip project that, like you say, we've, we've been working on uh all the way back until two thousand fifteen at this point. It's been quite a, quite a uh, a journey to get uh to a uh construction year of two thousand twenty-three. So we want to get them uh, you know, the bulk of their work out of our way. So uh we're not tying up the entirety of of Revia Street at any one time. Um, so uh again, there'll be a better presentation from them, but we, you know, we we do have a little bit of uh uh reason to get them in and out as quickly as possible so that we can proceed with the project we've been working on for so many years.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, just quickly, um, tell, uh, Mr. President, you have.
Yes, you know. Uh, just one quick question, are we going to be doing any other kind of utilities while that project's going on, while the street's open? Now, water, sewer, uh, gas?
So the gas, uh, the, I I've agreed, uh, I I told the, the hundred-year-old gas main in that street uh and and they've agreed to uh work concurrently with the gas replacement on that leg of Revia Street as well. Um, we have multiple water mains on that, on that street. Um, there is no proposed water work. Um, you know, the 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 water mains that we, we we have, you know, a a twenty-inch, we have a twelve and a ten. Um, we're not proposing any water work or or any additional sewer work. Uh, we ma- um, we, obviously, we repaired that that collapse uh just this past winter. We will certainly video it and we could do some more lining. Uh, but again, lining is not uh excavation-based, so no, there's no, no Winthrop infrastructure work other than the the electric gas and electric uh uh um National Grid gas and National Grid electric at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you, S- Steve, I know that we're mandated um by the state to replace a certain amount of lead piping that is in there. Um, e- each year, I know that that's something that comes up. Would it be cost-effective if there is any lead pipe in there to maybe jump that? And while the street is open, replace that?
Yeah, so so what we're doing right now, I'm already compiling the list uh for the, for the lead line replacement project uh next year's contract. This contract is is full, we've already got the roster out, uh, the mailings that have all gone out. Uh, next, next year's project, which will be uh calendar year twenty-two, still prior to our our breaking ground of uh of our tip project and still well into their project, will be replacing all uh full lead line services uh it on that leg, but we're going to have to coordinate it such that, you know, they pass, they get to a certain point and we'll fall behind them and and do those lead line replacements. Uh, again, that money is only eligible for full lead line replacements. Um, you know, that that's the only money for uh water money that we have available to us right now is that lead money. So we certainly do want to take advantage of it. Uh, but it, uh, you know, we we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be doing any water main replacement uh adjacent to that.
Okay, any other questions?
All right, uh, Council General. Um, not, not necessarily related to to this topic, so actually, if there's more of the town manager project, I can wait till the end, I apologize.
Just, I got three more items. Um, so again, Point Shirley Traffic Island has been completed. Steve is going to be moving up those stop signs, so they're actually up at Shirley and Taft's. Uh, so the significance of that is when you look to the left, you can actually see cars coming. So those are just adjustments that will be made down there. The tennis courts traffic island, where you were briefed on that earlier. Did I did um, was identified the problem over the weekend that we'll have T-SAC evaluate. Chief Flanagan brought to my attention when people parked down um after the cemetery gates. It's creating a traffic congested area, so we'll wait for the fences to be removed. Send this to T-SAC, ask for their opinion and bring it to the or uh rules and ordinances, but we might have to make that leg a no parking. Um, trash, uh, you know, we're meeting internally on trash, the Zero Waste Committee is still meeting um and putting together the rollout plan for the, for the trash fee. Um, so I just want everyone to realize that we're still meeting internally and we're still moving this forward. Uh, and I'll update you um as we move forward. Ferry, the D E P confirmed that they received our letter. They have not voted on the funding yet and we're still in talks with Quincy uh on their funding. So I I think um, I feel pretty confident that we will have the ferry up and running. Um, I'm shooting for June first. Um, K and P sent us all our landing agreements that were expired. Uh, Larissa's gonna, now is out hopefully tomorrow um to all the landing places such as uh Marina Bay and over um on the Seaport District and the Aquarium. So once we get those landing um positions in place, uh, we'll be able to full ser- service. But, you know, June first, then we'll be, we'll be running and again, we will hopefully have some nighttime cruises um where we can uh have charters out of the Winthrop uh landing and raise funds that way as well. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else have any questions on the ferry? Outside? Okay, we'll move on to the school. Do you have your hand up, uh, Counselors here?
I do, and and Regario first, though.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I appreciate it. Um, uh, thank you, um, interim town manager, I I appreciate the report. Um, just want to ask a question, a a news article surfaced um a couple of weeks back with with some pretty sort of disturbing details about uh some alleged activity on um the public bus here in town. And I I know there's an open investigation, so, you know, to the extent that you're um able to, could you, could you just please comment on uh, you know, some of the steps that that the town takes to uh make sure that all of our passengers are safe on the public bus? And also, um, what oversight do we have as a, as a town, as a town council? Um on on sort of uh the practices on uh this public bus company that, you know, we we contracted to work here in town?
Sure, so the the contract um flows through the M B T A um to Paul Rivair, so. Uh you you know, the the relationship is you see T drop, T buses, uh but you have Paul Rivair drivers in those T buses. So it gets convoluted uh for the general public to understand that, so um to to simplify this, yes, um I'm well aware that. That incident, I did follow up with Chief uh Green at the M B T A um on that Monday, um we had a good conversation. Um they, you know, responded immediately um when they were notified, they took immediate action. Um the crime did take place um in Winthrop, they had video on the bus, they were able to apprehend the person relatively quickly. Um I know that doesn't bring comfort um to the council or to the general public, I completely understand that. Um what are the processes that are in place, and that's something that we should invite the T and Paul Rivair into a council meeting? Uh to have them explain their vetting process and whether and what type of background check they're doing uh for the bus drivers that are on our route. Um I think those are fair and open questions, although we won't be able to get the specifics of this particular incident. Um for magnitude of reasons, it's illegal by by statute. Um you know, to to have these discussions because of the incident and the type of incident it was. Uh but I think fully we could have them in for for a full um presentation to the council. And the council should be able to ask them questions of their hiring practices and Winthrop residents should be uh be comfortable uh on what we vet out and what we accept. Um and and certainly, you know, we I would expect that they they do a full background check, um that a Corey uh is involved. But again, Corey for bus drivers is different for Corey for police and firefighters. Um they can also look back period is shorter, they can't ask the questions whether or not they've been arrested until stage two after a conditional job offer. Um so you you know, are they doing that, though? Are they doing just the general background check, which just asks general questions? Are they doing a secondary background check after the conditional job offer? Um that they can ask about past criminal history. Um so you know, the I am sure that they're following one fifty-one B. Um which actually dictates when you can ask those questions and how you can ask those questions and to whom. Um but let's not assume, let's have them in and explain that process.
No, tha- thank you for the background, and and I think that is important that we that we go forward and do that and um. You know, we we just want to make sure that everyone's safe, a- as you know, um and uh like I said, that that was just really disturbing to hear. Um so I I appreciate that, I I think we should move forward.
Yeah, Mr. President, um if you just advise what meeting you you would like him on, would said we'll send the correspondents out through to these or through my my office, wherever you you apply yours.
And I I I'll listen, I I think we're gonna be pretty busy uh the first two weeks of June with the budget and uh. The the things coming through, uh they have to go on the next ballot and so on, so maybe the first week of July. Or it's the second week, if we have but two meetings in July, we may not, depending on the holiday. All right, uh Council Terry, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of comments and a question, I just want to thank the interim town manager for. Um first of all, opening reopening Town Hall now nine to noon, I think it is, uh Monday through Thursday, which is fantastic. Working with the library to get that open is great. Um picking up on those expired landing agreements could have been a mess, so I thank you for for taking care of that. Um so one question that I would ask through the Council President is. We have these, you know, we're dealing with the budget, we're dealing with A P R and all the impending restrictions and what we are allowed and not. And I would like to look into. The possibility of 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 looking at getting an A P R specialist, I guess you would call them. Uh to give us some more guidance because, you know, it's too important to have guesswork and, you know, there's there's a lot at stake here. And we want to make sure we're doing the right thing and, you know, no disrespect to anybody, I don't think any of us are experts in A P R. And uh I think if there is such a person out there, I think it would be who but to look into that.
I I I agree with you, um we have an expert um on contract um to get us through some COVID funding already. Um the Assistant CFO uh has a relationship with them and certainly uh would would be asking them if they would extend into the A P Rs. Uh these are financial people that'll tell us what's allowable, what's not allowable. Um and will also tell us if there's borderline expenditures that they wouldn't go there and how how do we we spend, so um. Robbie, you want I did I articulate that enough or do you want to clean it up?
Yep, so the the plan is we we can work with the current um company we're working with for um for the cares in FEMA. There are other people out there, some towns are even hiring an employee um with the grant funds to manage them. Uh there's a couple of different options, but I believe that uh Cliff and Larson Allen would be open to helping with that.
Thank you.
I would keep the the council, I'd keep it as a contract item, I'm not taking on any more employees and um. Uh my intent is to continue um uh with the people we have that have gotten us this far.
Thank you, and and my last thing, I I assume that with the restrictions lifting as of the end of May, that we will be back to in-person meetings in June?
Um that's that's an item for the council itself, um the President and the rest of you dictate your schedule and where you meet. Um I will be supporting any decision um you make and, you know, we had a soft opening this week and. My idea is that within two weeks to to increase our opening here at Town Hall, so um the you know, that's my plan uh moving forward.
Okay, that that was my plan as well, and I I was gonna bring it up, uh if Council Terry didn't beat me to the punch. I see that uh you are in Town Hall, uh uh interim town manager, and I see Council DeMarco seems to be in. The Harvey Room with that broken clock behind him, and uh I don't know if that Harvey Room is ready for us. And maybe he can tell us what it looks like in there, or you can tell us what it looks like in there. But would would we be able to meet there in person on the first meeting in June and have a uh. Video feed so that the people could join us in Zoom with their questions or in public comment, because I think that's what's important. Even if we can meet there, that people can still come in via Zoom and uh and and join in in public comment.
Sure, I think I that's a complicated answer, and um I think you might want to consider just beginning your meetings at the senior center. Um because once you're meeting in a building, I think we have to say we're able to take the citizens in as well. Um whether they show up or don't is up to them, but we want to, if we do have a, you know, the budget hearings coming up and everything else, we want to have enough room, people can distance. E- even though they don't have to wear masks and and, you know, the governor has lifted the order, we still want to be cautious and we still want to have that distance or the ability to distance. But if you do choose that, we'll make sure the senior center is set up and ready to take us and we'll make sure that we have electronics there as well. Um to be able to zoom in to and listen to and have speakers so everyone can hear it.
All right, that would be great if you could look into that and we can make that, I could just make that call once we know it's safe to go there. Council DeMarco.
Thanks, uh Council President, um so this this is a question um just on logistics. Um obviously, things have changed since before the pandemic. And uh before the pandemic, we were working on the handbook, and I think specifically there was language in there, you know, I I. I I could be wrong, but that there was no remote participation uh allowed from counselors. And now, you know, obviously times have changed, we know counselors can log in from wherever they are. I want to make sure that when we do go back in person, if there is a counselor. Who for some reason can't make it or feels uncomfortable, that they are able to log in remotely, we have that ability.
But that's what we're gonna have, Jack, that we can do that. Okay, Council Christopher, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I remember when this was brought up a couple of months ago, uh we decided that as so long as the governor's emergency order as it pertains to the. Uh open meeting law is in place and we are allowed to uh continue to meet this way. We were going to do so because the 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 previous um the previous Attorney General's regulations on whether or not you could meet. Uh whether or not you could meet over a telephone were were much more stringent than the ones that we currently operate under. Uh for instance, a a counselor would have needed to provide some type of uh information about what's warranted to come to the meeting a- and and other things. I don't think that that's going to be what the rationale is moving forward, but as I understand it right now, none of those orders have been repealed. And I think that we could pretty safely continue to hold meetings this way, even if uh a a number of us was to meet in person.
Okay, Council DeMarco.
Uh to to through the Council President to Vice President Christopher, um just a discussion, I um if. I don't know if you know the answer to this, if the governor rescinds all the state of emergency on June fifteenth, does that affect the open meeting laws in our meeting?
I I believe that would be a question for K and P and I will send it out in the morning, Janelle Austin is uh keeps her apprised of of the governor's orders and missable meetings as well as Michelle, so I'll touch base with them.
Yeah, we'll we'll find out, I think once the order is over, it goes back to the old ways, but uh let's double check it. Okay, anything else? Interim Town Manager, hearing nothing, we will move on to the School Committee Report. And the School Committee uh met on May tenth. I had quite a long agenda, the first thing that we had handled was uh giving a new one-year contract to Superintendent Lisa Howard will be with us for another year. Uh the second was a presentation from uh two young people, um Michael Kearney and uh Katie Miller. Came up with a diversity, equity and inclusion resource center, which uh. Did go online, heard a lot of comments about, uh got a a lot of uh email is about that. And uh Superintendent Howard has taken that down to uh go through it and it's. I believe she's gonna uh try to less politicize it and uh make sure that it's educational and and not a political. So that's what's happening as far as that's going on. Superintendent also reported that there was some vandalism at the Gorman Ford Bank School and they uh had the people on video. That uh broke the basketball net and uh had some broken bottles and glasses or around the area and, you know, it it's so silly, I mean, this is. The the Gorman Ford Bank School is the most elementary school we have, it's kindergarten, first and second grade. Why would anyone be smashing bottles of glass around there, they there has to be a problem there with those people that would do something like that. It's also announced by the School Committee that there will be summer school classes and there will be six classes for each of the four buildings. And those classes will be held Monday through Thursday, uh one session in July and one session in August. It will be primarily math and uh English, but there will also be uh special needs classes that will be held for summer. All right, uh they announced the retirement of Sue Aickles, who has been the business manager for for many years and. Uh Sue has done a fine job and is uh represented this town very well as a business manager for the school department. And I want to wish her well in everything she does, uh she deserves uh, you know, our applause for the job that she's done in managing. Our school system uh all these years as a business manager. Uh and also uh announced was the appointment of a new principal at the Art of Tea Coming School. And that principal is Andrea O'Leary, who uh many of you know, she was assistant principal there. And she has now moved up to principal and um we wish her well as the new principal of the Art of Tea Coming School. All right, and that is the end of the uh School Committee Report, anybody have any questions for me? Hearing none, uh we will move forward. Uh and the next item on the agenda is old business, and I believe both items are no business with the middle school zoning. And audience review committee recommendations have already been given during the committee report, is that correct? Vice President uh Christopher, so we are gonna put those over, then we will keep them on old business for next month's meeting. All right, I am gonna pass the gavel over to uh Council Vice President Christopher. Because I have uh three appointments that I would like to make. And uh the first appointment I would like to make is the appointment of John Retagliano. As a member of the Airport Hazards Committee, uh I think everybody got the application in the email. Uh John was the former and first uh chairman of the uh MAPNAK Massachusetts Air. Pollution Noise Abatement Committee that the J C started back in nineteen sixty-nine and uh. If you ever saw that picture that comes up occasionally around during one of the prayers, you see John and myself as very young, young people. But uh John has been involved with transportation for many years, he was Secretary uh of Transportation with the City of Boston and he's had numerous jobs in transportation. And I think he's a good fit for the Airport Hazards Committee. I would also like to appoint Nicholas Advant to the Airport Hazards Committee. Nicholas was for century twenty-one, uh and he is interested in being on the Airport Hazards Committee. That committee has uh lost a lot of members over the past year or two, and I'd like to refill that committee and. Uh get them going on uh dealing with passports, noise, uh soundproofing and pollution, so. Uh that committee is important committee to have, and I ask you to put those two appointments to the Airport Hazards Committee.
Okay, so two ne- two names have been placed into nomination for the Airport Hazards Committee, John Retagliano and Nicholas Advancet. Uh is there a second to the nomination?
Second to both nominations.
Okay, they've been seconded, is there any uh discussion about the nominations? Okay, seeing no uh no discussion, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll for them.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockett. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Terry.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaCanti.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay, I will cede the gavel back to.
Oh, no, hold on, I have another appointment, but you can mark that one done.
Thank you, I will take the nomination.
All right, and then I uh next nomination is of Sarah Jane Forness of Shirley Street in Winthrop. I believe everybody got her uh resume and it's quite an impressive resume, it's it's very intense. She is uh an architect, show designer, she's worked in the architect for many years. She has a degree in architect, she has a master's degree in architecture, and I would like to appoint her to the planning board. So the appointment is for Sarah Jane Forness to the with the planning board.
Okay, Sarah Jane Forness's name has been placed into nomination for the planning board, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockett. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Terry.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaCanti.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any further nominations?
Nope, that that's it for nominations for me for this.
Okay, I will cede the gavel back.
Thank you. All right, the next uh matter on the new business is that Town Council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year in the amount of. One thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents, do you have that, Council Terry?
Yep, we've mo- uh moved that to uh finance, please. That's going to finance now.
Okay, it's going to finance, so motion's been made, send finance, uh and I will just, I I believe I could just send it without a motion. That will go finance, okay, uh there is a second motion for a Town Council to transfer seventy-two thousand. Four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy cents from the insurance fund. To general fund special article for Ingleside Park repairs. I don't know if that.
Council President, this is more of a clerical item, this is moving all the monies into the special article, so we can.
So we can purchase and pay for the contract for the Ingleside Park improvements to the playground. This is more clerical, this is money that's already coming from the insurance, but it just needs to be placed in the special article so we could pay out of it for the contract.
Okay, and I don't think that we need. To send that to finance, I think.
Yeah, I think we do. I I mean, it won't be a problem, but yeah, it's seventy two thousand dollars, I think it should be.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll I will send that as well to finance. Okay. Now, I believe there were. Two other motions that were coming up under new business. And Denise, do you have those motions? One was to accept money from uh that was raised for the Ingleside Park project. Denise, unmute yourself.
Yes, I can read them if you'd like.
Please.
Okay, moved that the town council vote to accept into the town donation fund. A donation in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars collected by Seth Williams. And subsequently transferred appropriate to the general fund special article FY twenty one Ingleside Park Playground Repairs.
Now that is to accept the two thousand dollars to go back to those same repairs. That uh we're trying to get done next month, we need a motion for that, you believe? Do you think that needs to go to committee for two thousand dollars, Counselor Terry?
I do not think so. No, that's money that we have here, it's gonna be.
Okay, I make that motion. Okay. Again, uh, is is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion is to the town council move to accept into the town donation fund. A donation in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars collected by Seth Williams and separately transferred. Uh, to the appropriate general special fund article so and so for Ingleside. Uh, Park Playground Repairs, so take any uh the action there too. All those in favor, please say aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart. Council de Marco.
Yes, and thank you.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaCanti.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay.
The the final motion that uh is under new business is. A motion uh by our town manager. And I I will read the motion, the motion is, I move the town council. Vote to accept the provisions of chapter forty four. Section fifty three F and a half. Of the Massachusetts General Laws. Establishing the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. As an enterprise fund effective fiscal year twenty twenty two. Or take any other action there too. Now, uh, this is coming up on the new business, I think this has to go to finance.
Uh, it really doesn't because it's not involving a sum of money, it's just um creating the enterprise fund. I think this could be voted now, we already discussed this and voted on doing this, I I don't think it has to go to finance.
Yeah, but I I think it does have to go to rules and ordinance to be put in. Uh. To uh bylaws, all the other other enterprise funds are. Have been set up uh in the bylaws, I believe this should probably go. To rules and ordinance. Tell you how 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 fast do you need this, what will be money coming in on this?
We need that fund set up before you uh vote the budget, so if you're gonna send it to anyone, we'd ask for a quick turnaround, maybe next meeting. Um, if they could establish a quick meeting uh on this fund. Um, again, this is a more administrative um matter at this point, since we've already passed the fee to it. We need now a a mechanism and avenue to put. Um, so I I I I think we have and Robbie will jump on me uh if I'm if I misstate this. Uh, but we want it set up before the budget process and before the voting of the budget.
Okay. Which you won't be voting on till the second meeting in June. So I'm gonna send this to uh rules and ordinance to come back at the next meeting, the first meeting in June. With the recommendation and with the right wording into the in into the uh. Bylaws with the other enterprise funds that are all in our bylaws.
I just wanna make sure that because the the whatever we do at the first meeting did not become official till we ratify the minutes at the second meeting. If there's anyone that puts this off at the next meeting. Um, you know, we're gonna have to set up a special meeting, so.
Okay.
Just to be, make everybody aware.
Yeah, so be one. One third meeting in June. Okay. All right.
I just have one question on it, if I can, uh, council president, uh. We had discussed that the one point two million dollars that has been uh in the budget for that uh. To be transferred into that fund, why wasn't that uh put into the language? It says no financial uh on the motion.
Yeah.
No financial.
It's funded out of the uh twenty twenty two budget, not out of the current year's budget, so this fund would have no money. Until you pass and voted the budget for fiscal year twenty uh twenty two. So um, that's where it gets funded from through the mechanism through the budget, which the finance commission is aware. And has already examined that and had public hearings on that. Um, so you know, it's not um that we're putting the cart before the horse, we need the account before the funds get approved.
Thank you.
All right. That will go to our rules and ordinance, please have a fast turnaround on that, Councilor Christopher. All right, that ends the new business and I will uh. Now open up the meeting again for public comment. Uh, I believe I've given the number twice, but I'll give it one more time, the number is one, three oh one. Seven one five eight five nine two. With an ID number of five eight eight, oh, I'm sorry, eight five eight. Seven seven nine two nine 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 eight pound. Okay, do we have any public comment? I see we have participants. I see Karen is online, okay.
Karen, you can unmute yourself.
Uh, council president.
Hi Karen.
I am speaking to you tonight as the chair of the C A F C.
Yep.
I want to thank you very much for appointing the three new members to our committee. Uh, one has extensive experience in state government and past city government. And two are in the private sector. That include that they are financial people, CPAs and auditors. And to be honest with you, this has been a great. Um, help to all of us. I also wanna thank um the CFO, deputy CFO, I'm sorry, Robbie Powers. Robbie has answered above and beyond anything that I have asked of him. As far as the finance commission, which is everybody knows, is the seven people on the C A F C. And the three members of the council subcommittee on finance. You know what? We've been working very, very hard and we're gonna continue to work very, very hard. And I want the council to realize. Before we pass in our final letter. On or about, I believe it's June seventh, if I'm wrong, Counselor Terry, please tell me. That any recommendations that we're making, we're not making recommendations. To punish anybody. Or to do anything detrimental to anybody. But to balance the budget, that is all we are trying to do. I saw in the Sunday paper and we had a meeting yesterday. Which I thanked the interim town manager for. We had a meeting yesterday with him. And the town of Hangum. Has really gone not into debt, but they've gone into an issue that they're gonna have to solve for twenty twenty three. Uh, they borrowed two point three million dollars from their rainy day fund. And they're using two point six million dollars of their pandemic money. And that's to fund thirty four new school employees, an assistant town manager. And a mental health clinician for the police department, along with two hundred and forty thousand dollars in seal maintenance. The advisory committee, which many of you know, I was a part of for many, many years. Has noted. To the town. That they may have to consider an override. Or consider cutting services. And that's what we, as the finance commission, is trying not to do. We don't wanna go into FY twenty three so in debt. That we're gonna have to cut services. So please bear with us and I hope everybody will understand exactly what we're doing. And Larissa, Cory is here and she told me she saw you today. Thank you.
Karen, thank you, thank you for your work on that committee and your work on all the other committees you run. Uh, you're do you're doing a great job. I I had to replace Bob Winn and Barbara Flavin. On that committee, so I tried to get two people with as much experience, but without the experience that those two had, they were on there for so many years. Uh, so hopefully you were training these new people on how to do things. But I think they're both get the right education and and the will to help. Is there anyone else that's on? Wishes to be heard?
Yes, yep.
I see Julia.
Yes.
Hello, Julia.
Hello, everyone, um, sorry, I missed the first public comment, um. Just a few quick things, um, thanks for the opportunity, um, first, really excited to hear about Ingleside Park going forward. We're really excited that that'll be back, uh, the whole community to be, will love that this summer, um. I'm happy to hear that Revere Street is moving forward, I just saw that on the tip, the twenty two to twenty two and twenty six tip, and I would ask that. Um, is there gonna be public meetings for that as well? I know most of the conversation tonight focused on national grid and the below grade stuff, but that's really a transformative project. Um, that has the capacity to really improve that. You know, fairly high speed main roadway, one of the few that we have in our town, so hoping that there'll be opportunities for um community pop participation. With the transportation advisory committee, we did a lot of review on that. A few years ago, so happy that's coming up. Um, okay, the second two things, um, the Sufa signs that are around town, I know these are. You know, remnants of the former town managers, um, Mass dot shared streets grant, I'm, I've been talking to a lot of people and you know, a lot of communities have these, it is a bit of an odd fit. For our town, but since we have them, um, you know, they're the big wayfinding signs that are sort of plopped in front of businesses or on corners. I would love to make them useful, since we have them, you know, since we used a pretty significant chunk of that grant to deploy them. Um, from what I can gather, the most useful piece of information and from what I've heard in the crowdsourcing I've done is the real time transit information. So if we could move those instead of being on sort of like a desolate corner where there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic. To, you know, some of the more high ridership bus stops. That would provide a great value, you know, people can literally just look and see when the next next bus is coming. Um, and you know, utilize it more for things like, I know I saw the library's been posting, I'm not sure what kind of. Agreement we have with Sufa for advertising, but you know, they're out there, so let's leverage them and you know, put out some public information and you know, help people find their way around. Um, same with the parklets, and I don't need to go too much on this, and I've been, I've been talking with interim town manager about this. Um, making sure that those are deployed, not in parks, but in parking spaces, um, which is what they're made for and what the shared streets grant program was meant to do. Um, I know we need to be strategic about where they're placed and it's unfortunate that the placements weren't determined before we got the grant, before they were built, but. I know a lot of citizens would love to help, there's a lot of businesses that would like these in front of their bus, in front, in front. Um, for people to sit and you know, and have more space, it was a post pandemic response program to activate. Spaces, reclaim public space on the street for people to support businesses in a time of crisis, so summer's coming up, people wanna be outside. Let's give them a place to, you know, sit outside, have a coffee, meet up with a friend, socialize, build community and the streets. Are a place that that we can do that, you know, parking a car is one thing, but we can also sit and have an ice cream and you know, help our businesses build back. So I really hope we can do that. Um, last thing I'll leave you with, I also um really hope that the D E I website gets relaunched. Um, I know the rollout's been rocky, but was really proud of the school for doing that and um. Don't think that anything is really political in there, but opportunities to learn and resources to make available. Certainly for me to use conversations with with my daughter as she grows, so I was, I was excited to see that and. Look forward it to to it being relaunched. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Julia. All right, next, I think Susan Leonard.
Yep. Suzanne, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you, um, thanks for the um, taking my call, I I was just wondering if somebody could provide a bit more context on uh the website. I I would say that there has been a very uh adamant and enthusiastic uh group of us, including me. Um, who've been really talking to administrators, um, we're educators, I myself am an educator. And so I was just, um, I I knew you probably covered this a little bit earlier, but I was just wondering if we could have just a bit more update on sort of what the status is, uh, as Julia said. This seemed, it's a resource guide. It's, it's not an ideological mission, it's a resource guide for people who might want to learn more about certain issues. Uh, and I'm very concerned as a Winthrop resident that this has become politicized in a way that I find um. Really disturbing, actually, so I was just wondering if somebody could speak to sort of what's what's happened to the resource guide, I understand it's been taken down.
Okay, I I believe the school department got a lot of complaints about it. And I know I got a. Half a dozen, I didn't uh ask me to take it down. She took it down and uh said that she was going to go through it. Uh, and revise some of the uh wording that's in there. And I I don't know which wording I, you know. She's talking about, but the points I I received. Were about the uh comments of of white supremacy, white fragility and 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 that kind of thing. Uh, I did not speak to her about it. But um, I guess she got many of the same kind of complaints, so she decided to take it down. I I'm sure they will put it back up after it's fixed.
Yeah, if I would just say, you know, I think this is an act of censorship, you know, this is an act of censorship by a small minority of the Winthrop population and um, I'm hopeful. We have written a letter, a number of us, um, that should be in the transcript on Thursday, I hope, uh, supporting the website and supporting the content as it exists. Um, so I'm very concerned that there's been a a group of vocal. Um, a a group of vocal people that don't necessarily represent um all of Winthrop that have um. That have been really toxic in their comments and that perhaps the school system has bowed to that pressure. Um, and so I understand this is not your purview exactly, but I would say that. Uh, you know, taking down a website that is meant as a resource guide is really disturbing, you know, I think this smacks of an act of censorship. Um, and and I think we all need to think really seriously about uh shielding information that is vetted. Uh, it's data, it's research and it's academic and sort of bowing to. The loud voices of a few community members makes me very disturbed. Uh, so I just wanted to say that publicly and I want that in the minutes, I think, I think it's really important to know that taking down a website that is a resource guide, a resource guide. No one needs to look at it if they don't wanna do, they don't need to teach their children those things if they don't want to. But the notion that we're going to hide information from a population and a community. Um, whom I I assume a number of people, including myself in this community, want that those resources available uh to take that down. Uh, you know, I I I just find that really disturbing. I feel like really disturbing to 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 live in a community. Bow to a few loud, in my opinion, forgive me, ignorant voices, so you know, I'd like that noted.
Thank you, Susan. Moving on.
Uh, yes, next up, we have Alexis Stevens.
Hi, um, thank you, I just wanted to echo what Julia and Suzanne said, I also. Was confused by why the website was taken down, um. And I think, yeah, bummed out the way Suzanne said it, I think I was able to look at the website earlier this week, it's it's super well researched, I think. Very thoughtful in the way it's organized as a resource guide for teachers and parents, I'm a teacher myself, not in Winthrop, but um nearby, and I think. This could be a really cool way for Winthrop to to put itself on the map as a leader um in the community for. Putting forth resources to help um bring attention to issues that just haven't been taught in schools enough, um. So, yeah, I really hope that the website gets put back up without significant revisions, um, to use Suzanne Suzanne's words that are like bowing to pressure from people and I hope the town council will. Support the website being put back up, um. You know, with the full resources that were there to provide information to parents and families and and teachers, but I just think. It's really important for Winthrop moving forward to have access to a resource like this, to start conversations, um. And maybe, you know, thinking of a way to make sure that. If there are voices who need to make themselves heard, there can be a way to do that without feeling like the website has to be taken down, um. Cause yeah, I just think that's that's a bummer that that happened and I hope to see it back up again soon.
Thank you. Uh, when uh that. People that put that together came on uh the school committee report. I informed them uh and told them about the commission that we signed, the Commission for Inclusion, Diversity and Community Relations. And asked them to get in touch with that committee and work together with them, so the town would uh. You know, be aware of diversity and equity and inclusion, because those are. diversity and equity and inclusion, because those are the things that we formed that other committee for. And uh I, hopefully they will work together and and come to the right balance of everything.
Mr. President, I very good ask um the council clerk to forward these comments to the superintendent and the school committee. Uh since that's a proper purview and um see people, we could just pass those messages along to them. I think they would uh they would evaluate these comments.
Okay, will do. Okay, um next up we have Wendy Millar Page.
Hi, um I was on the school committee uh meeting, watching the um presentation. And so I sent a request for some information into um the school department and I just want to share with you the response I have that might help some of the, maybe soothe some of the angst that's being felt. Um my understanding is that it's down for the um schools um diversity, equity and inclusion team so that they can reflect um and take consideration of the public commentary um that was received and so that it, they can ensure that like engagement and support of all of the people beyond school staff and and uh and students so that it would be there, so that it is going to come back. And it's not something that they're intentionally putting through into the curriculum. This is an external resource for parents and teachers to utilize um on conversations that all ages of children are already having and hearing. So it's, it's not a political thing that it's being taken down, it's not because there might have been commentary. Um I trust in this response wholeheartedly that it is something that they want to make sure that it's being rolled out smoothly and that public commentary is taken into consideration. Um and it's going to be a vital resource as Winthrop moves forward, um especially with our changing census demographics that are coming in. We need to be aware of diversity in our community and make sure that all students and teachers and families at home have the same resources available to them. So that was the answer I received, so I just wanted to share that with everyone and I thank you for the moment.
Great, um. Next we have Sharon, I'm sorry, Shannon Poulos.
Hello, I um two things I just wanted to address. Um one in general, I think just the idea around grants, you know, kind of being free money. I just want to point out maybe two things, you know, one, you know, grants obviously, other than them coming from incredibly wealthy people that just are giving money out, um otherwise they're coming from either federal, state, local, um you know, sources that we're ultimately bearing in our taxes in one way or the other. And I think the other part of that is that the administration and implementation of those grants are inevitably falling on the resources of our town. Um being on the Finance Commission, hearing um Director Calla, who works incredibly hard, you know, he having to be um implementing some of the things that the grant money is getting, that costs money. Um interim town manager Dele Hanti, who is now carrying two roles, him fielding questions and comments and having to deal with that, that costs money. Um our town planner who's writing grants, that's at the bequest of people who are setting priority for our town, that costs money. So I I I think we have to really change the narrative that grants are free. Um grants are not free, grants cost the town money, um and they cost our money, whether it be our town resources, um or whether it be in our state or federal taxes. Um the second point I just wanted to make was being a a loud, ignorant and uneducated member of the community who has expressed um um questions around the D E N I Resource Center on the um on the school website. You know, I just have to say, I think the hypocrisy and irony is if it's not so abundantly clear to everybody here and listening, that the people who are calling for inclusion and diversity don't want to hear anything else but what they are saying. I for one, as a parent, am not saying they're wrong. I'm not saying for one that what they're saying shouldn't be taught to their children around their dining room tables. Um I for one, am not a racist, I for one, am not upholding white supremacy, for which I was accused of by said people on this call who had dialed in. I think anyone who knows me would know that I don't uphold white supremacy. Um so I think that although I think everyone's voices should be heard, I also think it's incredibly important that if you're gonna hold yourself out there to be a diverse and inclusive group, I think you actually have to be diverse and inclusive and that includes listening to other people's opinions around issues and respecting parental rights. Again, I'm one voice, I am not sitting here trying to dictate anyone's um right to parent um the way that they they want to. I am just asking that somebody else not ask me the way to parent my child. I mean, it's as simple as that and 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 the accusations that have been thrown at me for, you know, having a voice. Um and I'm not gonna lie, I've been pretty rattling over the last few days. Um so I wasn't gonna speak because to be honest, it has been pretty rattling over the last few days. And I think that again, the people that know me know that I'm not upholding white supremacy. Um but I want you to know that the people that you're hearing from on this call are in fact part of a group that have to be looked at themselves. So um uh racism is racism is real, I talk to my kids about it, um but this is a not a one-size-fits-all issue and I just ask everyone to be respectful and not to think that they're an authority on an issue and using words like uneducated, loud and and uneducated and in um uh sorry, ignorant, um are in fact not inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Uh a- a- anyone using derogatory terms against anyone will be shut off. Uh and that's an absolute, it also is a three-minute time limit. So please uh contain your comments to three minutes, otherwise uh the observer Denise will cut you off after three minutes. Okay, coming on, we have three more people that want to be heard. I think Elizabeth Jones is up first.
Yes, hi. Elizabeth Pufal Jones, um I'm in uh precinct six. Um and I'm just calling in, I I appreciate that there, there have been some conversations that have been going on um since the D E I website was um put up. And I think that those are important conversations for us to have. Um those conversations do get heated at times, but we all get uncomfortable, we go into states of disequal liberium when our current train of thought gets challenged or questioned. Um and that's one of the reasons why I really appreciated the D E I website and the way that they had put things up there. They had put it up there for a lot of different um individuals, so that it could be for community members, family, students, um teachers even, so that we could all digest it in our in our own way. Um and and it's uncomfortable sometimes, it's uncomfortable to actually sit there and question your own belief systems, your own thoughts. I I am um a cultural psychologist and so I challenge people a lot to think about their belief systems and their thinking and how that thinking has been informed. And so I appreciate that it is very, very difficult to have these conversations, but I think for us to be able to move forward and upward as a society, it's important for us to have these difficult conversations. I'm, you know, I don't want anybody's feelings or um uh ways of life. Uh you know, I I I don't want their feelings to be hurt, I should say. And and that was not the intention of anything, but it is uncomfortable and I think we all need to be ready to have some really uncomfortable conversations to really realize how we can be fully inclusive um and accepting and move forward as a community. So um I did, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Okay, Katie Bell.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Um I just wanted to make sure that I called in for public comment. I also uh am a mother here, um and my kids are in school in Winthrop and I'm also a teacher. Um I have been working uh with Suzanne, talking with the schools and so I was really excited about the D E I Resource um page and I think it's really important that we focus on the idea that this is a resource page, no one's being forced to look at anything. And I find it really troubling that it's been removed uh for for revisions. Um I agree also with um the woman who just was talking about public comment on public comment. Um this is uncomfortable, these conversations are uncomfortable, that doesn't mean that we should be censoring them. Um so I I I've already written to the town council, I've already written to Lea Howard, to Lori in support of this and I just want to make sure that I'm publicly saying it, like we need to be having open conversations and and censoring what is being provided as a resource to parents and teachers, um something that people are not obligated to use, but are able to use when when they're in a place where they need to educate themselves, um so that they can um kind of like do right for their community, for their children, for their kids, is really, really important. Um because the the conversations are happening, um whether we're ready for them or not, and this is simply just a way to help enable um adults to and kids to have these conversations that are really critical, so we can move forward as a community in a more positive way.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Uh Suzanne again.
Thank you, I I do promise to make this brief. Uh and as you know, I don't generally show up at your meetings, so please know that I show up when issues are important. The library was important, this is important. And I would say that no one is trying to tell their uh, no one is trying to tell parents how to parent their children. And I want to be really clear about this, because the notion that someone is telling like any parent in this community what to talk to their children about is factually wrong. All this website is doing is providing a resource, if you want to watch the videos, which frankly are quite good. Um but if you don't want to, don't. If you don't want to read the books, don't. If you wanna, don't want to talk to your parent, your children about these things, don't. But again, I'll just say what I said before, this really smacks of censorship and I think we really need to think about does Winthrop want to be a community that censors information? Academic, vetted information, scholarly research. Are we the community that wants to say, no, we don't care about that because of a few loud voices? Um so thank you for listening to me twice and please don't try to take up your time. Um but there are a few things I feel passionate about and I and I hope you believe me when I say I won't take up your time for trivial things, but these two.
Suzanne, you're always welcome to, I just uh you never want to hear a debate going back and forth. You are always welcome to speak your mind.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Is is there uh anyone else on public comment?
I don't see any other hands up at this time.
Okay, and we will close public comment and we will go into public relations. Uh in public relations, we still have openings. I closed the one on the planning board tonight and and couple for the airport hazards, but there are more openings on airport hazards. Have an opening on the Board of Appeals, meat opening on T S A C and Conservation Commission, so uh and also the I T committee, the new I T committee. So please, if you're interested in helping the town, and I hear people coming in here that they're interested in helping the town and want the right thing for the town, volunteer to be on a committee, fill out an application and get it in. Uh you know, in June uh thirtieth, a lot of the committee members' terms are expiring. And uh I'm looking to replace some of those people and some of those people are not coming back. So um fill out an application, any committee at all that you'd like to be on. Please put out an application and get it into me, because uh there's gonna be a lot of openings uh in the next two meetings, so so please uh fill out applications and and help us out. We're all here for you, but we need you to be here for us, we need committee members to keep the town going. Thank you. Anyone else have anything on public relations, any other counselors? Hearing none, I will attend a motion for German.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Council de Marco, seconded by.
Second.
Okay, seconded, uh all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Senator Jim.
Yes.
Counsel Plakat? Counsel de Marco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte?
Yes.
Counsel Freino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned, please be safe, enjoy the rest of the week, the weather's been great, but the pollen is horrible. So be careful and stay healthy, everyone.